Let me call this morning's meeting to order for our budget workshop. And Josh, you can, we'll just turn the floor over to you and let us take it, take, take us through your presentation.
All right, so instead of just printing out multiple, multiple sheets of paper for everybody, it'd be easier just to look at this on the screen and I'll zoom in as we get, as we go into certain things here, but let me start out by saying, you know, we don't have all our numbers yet, so we're still waiting on our sales tax projections, which will more than likely be the end of this month, we get that in the upcoming budget. Also, we do not have our, our fire district tax calculations yet either from the county. That will be next week, I'm being told, so just know that this is, this is very fluid at this point and there will be, obviously, there's going to be changes that they come about with those, with those two revenue numbers I just mentioned. What I've done here is I've went ahead and put in what essentially what you're going to have is a balanced budget today. Now, like I said, it is early on and we are, sure, there will be many changes that we make to this, but from, from just kind of a starting point, this is what we've, what we put together. I think it probably would be good to start off with just the, the revenue neutral or the neutral property tax calculation. All of you should have a sheet, which I think makes it easier to understand. Essentially, what you do, you go back to the last tax evaluation and Bunkham is on a four-year cycle, so they do it every four years. You input those numbers into the spreadsheet and of course, it's going to spit out your answer, but what that does is each year, you're calculating the percentage change and sometimes that may be a decrease. In our case, it's good, it's, it's been an increase. So if you look at these numbers, really what we, what we end up with is a 7.3, excuse me, 7.13% increase over the, over the year since the last property tax evaluation. Currently, our rate is at 33.25 cents. With the new evaluation, to get the same number, our property tax would drop to 28 cent, well, 28.29 cents essentially is what the new property tax rate would be to give us the same amount of ad valorem revenue that we currently have. When you factor in that growth rate of 7.3%, and this growth rate would, really what this does, if you don't factor in a growth rate, then you're going to be missing the revenues from anything new that's been done. So with the growth rate you factor in, you come up with a property tax rate of 30.31 cents, which would be your revenue neutral rate for the upcoming year. Now, you know, the board has the ability to change that number to whatever you want it to be. But with that being said, if you don't have questions on that specific portion, I'll try to run through some of these numbers. Does that work for everybody? So the growth rate you calculate, if you look over at the, on this page, the 2.97, 3.19, and 15.21, if you add all, it's up and divide, you get 7.13.
Okay. What, what, what you're doing is taking the actual for three, you know, you're getting your average, what really happened, and if you don't, if you don't do that and then get an average and add it, factor it in to the re, to the revale number, if you will, you, you're, you're going to miss the growth that occurred
Right.
in the past cal, in the past fiscal calendar year, I guess it really is tax year.
Got it.
So, you know, otherwise you'd have a, you know, you'd be losing
Right.
revenue on the rebound.
On the
Could be.
Okay.
Well, you would be, the way the calculation works, because you start by taking it down to sort of the effective rate, which is what, what was your tax, what was your revenue in the prior year and, and taking it down to where the rate would be, the exact same amount of money in the prior year, like no growth, period. So if you don't factor in the growth rate, you're, you're, you wouldn't even be where you would be. It does, it kind of takes the revale out of it, that calculation does at that point, because you've taken it down to, to the, to an effective rate of no, no more revenue. There's not, just to sort of forget about the percentages, no more revenue. What's your new, what's your new revale number? And then take a tax rate down to where your revenue is, just like it was in the prior year, which would not make, it's not, that wouldn't make sense.
Right.
Well, if you have growth, it doesn't make sense.
Got it, thank you. So let me just start off with this, this is our general fund summary, so every department's going to be in this sheet here, but what I'm going to kind of key you in on is if you look at ad valorem and DMV taxes as well as other taxes, you've got over $6 million. Essentially, those two line items, which will be our property tax and then your sales tax, they make up almost 60% of our revenues. So these two, you know, these two have a, a big impact on our budget. That's where most of our revenue comes from, is property tax and sales tax. Then you have, of course, we have some unrestricted revenues and some restricted revenues. Restricted revenues are more like funds, things that have to be used for certain, certain things, ABC forfeiture funds, things of that nature. Of course, you've got permits and fees, sales and services, and then some miscellaneous, but ultimately you get a total of $10,410,069 for our estimated, this would be revenues. And of course, they're estimated right now. I think we'll be able to, to hone in on that a little bit better, probably within the next month when we get those, those other projections. And then I'm going to scroll down here.
Josh, could you go back up to your other screen where you were with your projected 10?
Yes.
I guess I was, what I was confused with, and still am a little bit, that far left column, fiscal year 19 to 20, 5.6?
Yeah, something looks a little wacky with that. These, this number obviously is not correct. This would, should be a much larger number.
And so's the, so's the third column.
The third column is the same, that's correct.
Yeah.
That should be a much larger number.
Yeah, it's okay, I'm just looking at that, I mean, it doesn't
So we'll get all that stuff, we're fine, when, when we get to the, when we start getting to the front half of the budget.
And that actual, that, that column there's not right either.
Well, that's your actuals right now, so that's where we're trending.
Oh, oh, actual, to date, I got it.
Actual of the first of this month, yes.
Okay.
So if I'm going, I'm scrolling down here now, I don't pay a lot of attention to, this is the, the, really where I focus on, and this is really whether we're going to be appropriating fund balance or, or not. Right now, essentially, it's a revenue neutral budget. Right now, you'd be appropriating $66 from the fund balance, so. In the past, you know, we, I think it's, it's been, it's normal that we do appropriate some money for fund balance.
Well, you, you kind of have to.
Yep.
Because if you don't, you'd end up having to amend the budget and send it down to
Now, last year
council, council of government, every whipstitch, if you don't appropriate some in there.
Last year, we, we, we stayed, I think about zero, just because of the pandemic.
You may have, but that's, it's pretty, if you, almost have it.
We've got some budget amendments in there, so.
Yeah, but you, if you, I mean, we always appropriate a little bit and you don't usually, if you, we, that's why we usually come in a little under budget, because if you don't, you know, you're, you're going to be, it's, there's nothing wrong with it, but you know, if you amend the budget, you have to, you have to send it back down to the school, to, where is, where is it?
You don't have, you don't have
Local Government Commission.
Yeah.
Yeah, Local Government Commission, just like the, you know, the audit and so forth. So you know, you, you normally always have a little, little buffer there or you're just kind of skating around with having to, I mean, it's nothing wrong with it, but it's, you don't, that's not, not desirable really to have to go through that throughout the year.
So right now, in this, in this proposed budget, we're going to be spending 1.34 million in capital. Debt payments are almost right at 500,000 almost, and then you've got your personnel and your operating, which gets, brings us of course, to the $10,410,675. So let me hit some revenue numbers, as I mentioned, you know, these, I'm not going to have a, a, a better estimate on these until the, probably the end of March. You know, this is kind of what we're, I think we're going to end this year, which isn't, it isn't really too far off from where we budgeted, so I think we'll be pretty close there on our sales tax projections. And then you've got all your, your franchise taxes from electricity to telecommunication, pop metro gas, things of that nature. And I'm going to show you some, remember the Pell bill, that'll be important, I'll talk about that in a few minutes, but right now, we typically are getting around $225,000 a year for Pell bill. That money comes from the state, that is from the gas tax that is collected by the state, that is sent to every municipality to help maintain their streets in the town. And so that's what we get every year and we typically try to spend that money on paving, sidewalks, you can spend it on paving sidewalks, you know, street, street type equipment, but other things, you can't spend it on, it's going to be restricted more to those, to those street type expenses. And then we, you know, I think another one that's, that's, that's been pretty big for us and I think will continue at least for the next few years is our, is our building permit revenues. Currently, we're at about $212,000. I'm projecting next year, we do probably around $280,000 in building permit revenue with all the new development we've got going in, new subdivisions that have been, that have been permitted. I think, I think it's likely that we do see that large of a number in building permit revenues, which is really good for us. We, I will say this, this past February, we had our strongest year in building permit revenues in 11 years, our strongest February.
That's right.
And that was at $38,000. And then as I mentioned a few minutes ago, the, the fire district tax from the county, I don't have that information yet, but this is, this is what we anticipated to receive this year, I just kept it kind of the same, knowing that that, that is going to, that is going to go up a little bit based off of the revenue neutral calculation, because I think that district went up 20, the valuation 20 some percent for the East Bunkham District. And then we've got different things in here from, you know, youth sports, and this, this stuff is going to be, this is going to be very fluid right now, because I, we don't know what the pandemic's going to be like this summer, so that's going to be a guess right now. And I'm hoping that we get some more, some better information from the state and hopefully this thing fizzles out and we can get back to normal.
Yes, a question, I, I understand, I know what the fire district ad valorem tax is. Remind me how the fire district sales tax?
I can't answer that, Larry, but I'll get you an answer for that.
Yeah, I don't, I just can't, Brian, do you know how that works? I don't, kind of just doesn't ring a bell to me. I guess it's portion of the sales tax.
The portion of the sales tax in that district, yes, and I, I will get a better answer for that.
But this is a, that's a number, I mean, this is back on our discussion at our board meeting Monday, that's $1.2 million.
That's correct.
Or closer to 1.3 million.
That's right. Let's see.
Money that comes in for the fire district is that allocation?
It just goes into the general fund. So right here, you're going to see quite a large number of fund balance appropriation from Pell bill, $700,000. We, for whatever reason, the Pell bill money was not being spent as, as much as maybe it should have been in the past. I don't know the reason for that, but we have an excess amount of fund balance in that, in that line item right now. Last year, we didn't spend any, I think, just because of pandemic and we wanted just to be, be safe.
We didn't do it in sidewalk, just because we knew where we've been spending.
Well, and we've been working on, we're still working on Highway nine.
Yeah.
Right now, with going back and forth with DOT and the property owner about easements right now.
Right.
But typically, I think we would want to spend this money every year, most of it, and maybe leave a little bit in fund balance for Pell bill, just in case something happens, but the, the reason you see a big number is because we've got a big number there now. We've got $560,000 in Pell bill currently. The next, of course, for this budget coming up, we'll have another 225. So I am, I am suggesting or recommending that we spend a majority of this money on street paving.
That's about time, too.
About $500,000 on street paving and maybe a little more, but some sidewalk work and things of that nature with the rest of that Pell bill money. But if you've driven around town, I think everybody would probably agree that we need to do some paving.
Sure. Well, it's been a number of years, I mean, how long, Brian, how long, going back to the Montreuil sidewalk, for it started, that's been a long time ago.
Six, seven years ago, right?
Yeah, we poured a lot of money in sidewalk, which is been good, I think that's what, I think that's what the citizens wanted, but you do have to go back to roads at some point in time.
So, you know, and I guess speaking of sidewalks, you know, that's a conversation we can have another time, but essentially, right now, Highway nine, with this last section we have funded right now, we're, we're done for the most part. And what, what I mean by that is the first section of Highway nine that runs from Blue Ridge Road up to Dogwood, I think that's the name of that road, that'll be state funded. Whenever they do that roundabout, they're going to take care of that sidewalk. The other section in between Doug Brock's property, is who we're working with now on this, on this last phase, but the second phase runs through Cheshire there, and if you recall, I know some of the new members weren't, weren't here for that, but we did have some conversations back and forth with the property owner and we ended up not doing sidewalk there. They, they currently have a, a rock dust path and I think there were, there were some discussions back and forth about the town paying for brick pavers and we chose not to do that. So at this point, that is just a rock dust path that gets through there. So if you were, if y'all are okay with this, I was just going to run through every department real fast.
Sounds like good plans. Anybody have any, more ahead in any different directions? Does that sound good?
So this is just a general overview for our management team this day, but there will be times in the future where we'll need to really get specific about something.
And that's completely up to just the board, how do y'all want to do that?
You can also make, I mean, if you, if you have specific things you just want to dig into without any particular agenda or whatever, just meet with Josh and go through it. You know, it might be a
Yeah, if, if
Two of you can meet if you have that desire, you know, two of you.
If y'all have certain things you want to see in here that aren't in here, and I'm sure there probably are some things, because I can't read your minds, and that's, you know, it's, we'll, we'll get that in there as we move forward. See how that, I see how it shakes out? Governing board's pretty, pretty straightforward, not a lot to this one. Our professional services, you'll see, has gone up a little bit. That is, that is really due to our legal fees for Attorney Steve and our, we have, we do have a, Robertson Stevens does some HR workforce on the legal side, so we do pay them from time to time for certain things, but that, that has, that has creeped up over the years, I, I think, just because we've had the need for it and there's just so much going on and we've got, you've got to have, you've got to have some legal advice, so. Administrative, let me see, so I've got some notes here.
Also in that number, the legal number, which is sort of building, but there's some of that work that is not really recurring. For instance, you did, did the Personnel Manual, which that was pretty pricey.
That's true.
Just had a couple of projects in there that were not necessarily recurring, although in that kind of tends to be recurring stuff, whether you think it's going to recur or not, but Personnel Manual does come to mind, it was
Yeah.
I think
It does.
It's been a lot
And then with this, you know, with this 160D we've been working on, that, that, that's just some things that have, that have come up that we needed more somewhere help on. This has jumped up a little on our contract services and the reason for this, we need a new mini-split or an HVAC system in our IT room. It is, it is not currently functioning and we need to keep, keep that stuff cool. And those are relatively inexpensive, about $5,000 for one of those for, for our little IT room.
So let me, now, what, what are we looking at right here?
I was just, I've got a, just some little, some little notes on certain items that I think have grown and that, just to kind of bring your awareness to them.
Well, what, the other reason I was wondering, what, is this, these are other, these are operating expenses and admin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, was that where, was that, was that where you would budget your cybersecurity, your IT budget?
Yes, here or public, it might be public buildings that we budgeted in, Larry.
And how much, and you may not know this off the top of your head, but you can come back to us, how much do you think we spend on cybersecurity? And you may not know, but
I don't have an answer specifically for that. I will tell you, for our IT services, right now, we spend about $40, $500 a month.
Uh huh.
Now, that of course would include some cybersecurity, but I don't know what that breakdown could be.
Yeah, I, I think at this juncture, you know, just in, not only us, but every municipality, I think it'd be good to, to get, get a little baseline on what, and I can, you know, I can, you know, we, I know, I think be appropriate for, for you two to look, maybe School of Government has some guidelines and our IT people should have some. I mean, those might not be the best to go by, because, you know, we need to get some more, you know, objective other third party and maybe if we need to pay somebody to assess it, but it's just a place where we probably need to make sure we're doing what, what needs to be done. And I know we're doing some things and so forth, but that, that is
It's a vulnerable place.
Yeah, it's, it sure is, sure is.
And, yeah, if you get hit with some of that stuff, it's going to eventually shut this down.
There was an article that I'd, I'd forwarded to Josh and Jamie, it was, it was in the paper, it was in the Wall Street Journal a couple of weeks ago, that a municipality in Florida had their, had their water treatment plant, you know, if you, it may have been in the actual, other papers too, but I see other heads shaking, but you know, it's, that could happen with ours, I was thinking about when Jamie was talking on Monday, but you know, checking everything with your phone, well, there's two sides to that coin, you know, it's a, and so you, we just, whether we like it or not, and I wonder if these phones, the phones our people are using, our staff are using for that, if they're encrypted and all that kind of stuff, I mean, it just, it's just the world we live in now, so.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we need to take a look at that. We may be adequate, I just, you know, we
Sure, we'll, we'll take a look at that. Yeah, your admin is really, I mean, it's relatively, there's not a lot in here that's different from the previous year, you know, minus, I did add that in for that, for that HVAC system to go in, but rather than that, right now, there's not much difference in this one than last year. Public buildings, this is, let's see. All right, here is, zoom in a little bit, let's see here. So this one's went up and the reason for this, our current email, we use Gmail, we are out of emails and we cannot get any more emails, we've reached our capacity. So we need to change to a different email client and our IT folks have suggested essentially the Microsoft suite, where we go to Outlook and use that. I think we're, we're at a place now where we're going to have to do something, just because we can't, we can't give folks new emails, because we don't have any. Doug had asked some questions when you first got on board about us, us having an email and the reason we can't supply those emails is we don't have, but going forward, it would be much different.
I didn't know you could run out, frankly.
Apparently with, with Google, apparently you can. And this has, this also has a, this is a monthly charge for the new emails as well as phone charges, and I've got these phones budgeted, I think maybe in another sheet here. Our phones in town are at least 10 to 15 years old, these, these land, these handheld phones, you can't get replacements for them, they don't make them.
Yeah.
So it's, it's time to, it's time to upgrade our phones. So that's what this, that's what I've got this in for. That's, you know, it's, it's a little bit of an increase, it's about 30, you know, $37,000 from last year, so.
We had that happen at the office.
That's the big change for, for, for this budget from, from previous year to this year. I do have $5,000 in here, here's the new phones for the building, so that, essentially the new phones, we would be, we pay a monthly fee on each phone, like it's $25 a month, and then those phones, if something happens to them or tear up, you get a new phone, they just replace them.
Have you thought about a, I don't, I don't know how it works, but have you thought about a, are these just phones that, is it a system? Is it, I mean, the sys, is this, do you not, it's not taught, you're, you must have a system that ties everything together.
Yeah, it's, it's
But that's not a new system.
It's the O R P.
Because you're just new phones.
Yes, that's right. It'll be the same as we have now, which is Voice Up R P. Planning revenues, not, this isn't too exciting, and I've got our building permit revenues in here on what I think those are going to be for next year, some fire inspection revenues, the stormwater permits, and then variance in review fees, and these are just kind of based off of what we've seen in, in previous years. And, you know, these can change, you know, so we could do a lot more in stormwater or a lot less, it depends on how many people are developing. Same thing with variances and review fees. Planning, all right. This number, the salary number, you can see is a little bit bigger than the past. One of these reasons, well, a couple, a couple reasons is, this has a, a new position, which is a stormwater position in it, to run our stormwater program that we're going to talk about at another special meeting, because it's just going to be that complex that we need to have a meeting solely on that. It also includes some retirement money, actually, that's not, that's not right, Dana, our building inspectors retiring May 1st this year, so we are getting on that, but that fee, the, the, the increase in that is due to cost of living. Right now, I have a 2.5% increase in here for our cost of living, forgot to mention that in the beginning, but then we can, that can be up or down, but right now, that's what I've got in there. The 101, you can see is a substantial increase from previous years. Now, this number, I think we can refine as a new cluster to adoption, but this number has stormwater supplies and some stormwater compliance in it, which we really don't know what that's going to be at this point, but as we move closer, I think this number will be refined. And that's, you know, all that's going to be based on when we, when we speak to the board about the utility and all that information, I'll set that up, I think this number can be honed in a little better. But we're early, it's just March 10th, so. The $75,000 here transferred to General Capital Project Fund, this is for the Riverwalk Greenway. We, in the past, have usually put back between $75,000 and $80,000 every year to go towards that match. The $92,000 for capital outlay, this would be, we have a stormwater master plan, we requested that we get that updated, that cost is $35,000 right now, we may be able to get that a little cheaper, we just contacted the person who did it for us last time, just to get an estimate on what that cost would be. But this would be the perfect time to redo that master plan, the one we have, I think, was done in 2009 or 10, so it's, it's pretty dated. Since that plan, there's been a lot, a lot of things that have happened, a lot of new developments that have went on, so we really need to get that updated, and this would be the perfect time to do that with the, with us going into talking about the utility, having a new plan in place, showing us where we can do the most impact with our work. Also, this number includes the pedestrian connection under Interstate 40. If you recall, at our meeting Monday night, we, we did sign an agreement, made an agreement with DOT, the money in here for this, I think it's $25,000 to do that work underneath there, the ADA work, things of that nature, to get that compliant with their requirements. And then I've got a bike and pad improvement project in here. Now, this, the bike and pad improvements really go hand in hand with the traffic, parking and circulation study we did a couple of years ago, just trying to pick some information out of that to implement. And this, you know, this will be, this could be bike lanes, this could be sharrows, this could be some new sidewalk, some, you know, different types of things for that, but just trying to, trying to make sure that we're, we're implementing some of the stuff that we've, that we've planned to do over the past. So those are the big changes to the planning budget for this year versus last year. Police revenues, I don't, I won't get into this very much, because I don't, I've got $8,800 in here, so it's not a lot. Our Monterey dispatchers, if you recall, that we don't, we know they're getting that revenue stream, because we're not doing that work anymore. So police, the changes in police, this, I'll tell you this, the salary, the salary number, what I do have included in this would be a, a new position and what this position is, we have two part times right now, we want to get rid of those two part times and hire the full-time position. The difference in cost is about $28,000 for the full-time versus the part-time, and that essentially is mostly benefits. When you pay, when you're part-time, people don't get the insurance and all the other stuff, that's essentially that difference in cost.
So Josh, where do you put dispatch?
It's right down here in Contract Services. As you'll see, it's growing by $164,000, which is really the dispatch number, it's 161,000.
Right. Right.
Now that number. I'm hopeful it may go down as we move forward, you know, as the county has it, has it. I'm thinking that there's potential for that number to go down. Currently, the, the other municipalities are working with the county, and I'm going to be attending a meeting here in a couple of weeks with those folks that, the, the other municipalities that the county, you know, currently does the dispatch for, you know, they're not, they're not paying any fees for that. So they're still trying to work on, on that, on those figures for their upcoming budget.
So we ended up paying less than we were paying.
Yeah.
And we're, everybody else is not happy. So we may be able to ride their coattails to zero, that's what we're looking for.
Uh, let's see, that's the big number, I think, the other stuff, and, and capital, excuse me, for police. I do have two police cars in here for capital. The request was three, I funded two. For right now, and of course, that, you know, that could change.
In, in the meeting on Monday, Chief Freeman mentioned that we were, compared to other municipalities, we were understaffed in the police department. Uh, or have you received their calls? Has he requested additional officers?
He has requested three additional officers, that's correct. I do not have those in this budget. I would prefer that we wait and see how the dispatch goes with the county to see what those calls actually are, if there's a difference in what we have. Because our calls did, did change as we went into dispatch with the county, that consolidation, our calls dropped by seven thousand from that change, so I want to see if they're going to drop again. For fire, I don't have any employees here right now, okay? There's no new employees in fire. As far as capital goes, those are going to be your big changes.
Hey Josh.
Yes, there'd be a comment just a little bit about that, just pursuant to our
discussion on Monday with the Safer Grant and so forth. And, and I, I chatted with another, um, with another mayor in the county about it, who has a lot of experience, he has a lot of experience in that world, not necessarily fire, fire department, but he knows a lot about them. But the suggestion would be, and I think it's a good one, that it's, it's difficult, and I think it's actually true with the, and although Chief Freeman provided those comparisons, I think you kind of have to drill down into the comparison some of those call numbers and so forth. I mean, who, who, who knows what, where those numbers are dropping? Because even our own call numbers are grossly overstated, you know, in prior, prior reports. Not, not intentionally, it just were. But the, the suggestion was for, uh, Chief Harris to go to Hendersonville, Weaverville, maybe the Skyland, uh, Fire Department, which is a, which is the largest one. But you know, it's a lot of population down there, they have a lot of equipment. But you know, do a comparison with the equipment and the staffing. And I'm, I'm personally, and there's, this may or may not make any sense, ha- have the same sense of that, to, to look at those numbers with the various fire districts, which we're one. But just to compare. And I would just be curious where we are as a county with the, you know, with our other fire, and, and other municipalities as well. And just what the comparisons are. It's ju, it's just so difficult to make these decisions when, if, when the, um, when the baseline you're looking at is some national standard. Or even a, even a southeastern standard. You just have to be able to compare apples to apples, and it's pretty difficult to do. And, and sometimes, you know, to me, the, the test also is what, what is, what's the work life like for our, our firefighters and our police officers? You know, are they, are they, you know, are they have, do they have to work overtime? Do they, are they being put in dangerous situations because they're, they're overworked? It's a little bit like the sanitation workers when we were, and I think rightfully so, we started off with thin staff because we didn't know what we would need, and you'd rather add than, than have to take away. But you don't want that to create a situation where it's not safe for somebody to be working because we're asking them to do more than they need to do. And to me, that's, that's the bottom line. And of course, we, you know, you have to have adequate, you know, police and fire protection and so forth. And so there's just a, there's a little bit more that goes into that for the, in, in order for, for the board, whether we could afford it or not, to know what we at least need to aspire to one way or the other and work toward. As far as these budgets are concerned, but I just felt, I did want to share that. I think we still need to look at it, and I think we need to, um, uh, for the police department as well. Because those are critical services that, that are responsibility of, of, of the council. And so I, I, I'd want us to continue, I don't think it's going to happen in this budget because it's too involved. But we can, um, you know, we can continue working on it and, and see where we are as the year progresses and then for budgeting, you know, in the, in the coming year. And it could actually even fit into a budget plan for more than, more than one, you know, fiscal year really. Because you know, you're talking, as, as we were talking Monday, that's, it was a half, you know, it's going on a half million dollars of, of, uh, of additional payroll, and which is, you know, which is just not something you can take on in, in one fiscal year very easily.
Yeah, and the thing about payroll, that's a, that's a recurring.
Yeah, it's not going to, it's not.
Capital expense of a two hour.
Probably going to increase, yeah, recur and increase. And so, and, and, and so it's probably one of the most significant decisions a board would make. And so we need to, we need a little, we need more, and, and I think before anybody starts on anything, we need to agree on the information that we would want.
I completely agree with that.
Yeah, so.
I mean, I think it's, I think it's important to get the expectations of this board.
Yeah.
You know, and I think that will tie in perfectly to what, you know, what we can, what we move towards.
Right.
One of the pieces of information I find interesting, along with numbers of trucks and whatnot, is the salaries. And how our salaries compare to comparable area. In both the police and the fire, and I can see you can't just all of a sudden one year.
Yeah.
Do that, but I would love if we could have a conversation of a long-term plan, like this is where we need to be. Here's where we are now, and what are the incremental steps it will take to get there and, um, try to plan ahead a little bit.
Yeah, and I've talked to, talked to Scotty multiple times, and I think you don't, it's not in this right here, but I do, we do have intentions in this year's budget to try to do something with more of a, uh, in the fire department specifically, more of a career ladder type system, because right now it's just, it's just not there for those folks, and they get stagnant and there's really nowhere to move up to. I think that would be, would be helpful for that department. Now, of course, the PD has that in place where you, you know, you have all the, you know, the police officer, the, the different positions as you move up. And the fire just doesn't have all those in there right now, so.
So at what point would we be talking about that?
We can talk about that at our, if the board wants to, we can talk about that at our next, at your next budget meeting, if that, if that's the all. Or we can talk about that one on one.
One thing that stood out to me when I was speaking with, uh, our firemen during the campaign was that they were working a lot of overtime, and that they did feel, um, understaffed, uh, compared to the recommendation for our firemen for truck. You know, so whether, whether or not how, you know, you know, regardless of how we compare to other fire districts uh, in the area, you know, I think we do want to make sure that our firemen are safe and safe and they have the support, um, you know, in order to do their job. So, uh, you know, I, I do want to make sure that we're, you know, we're happy to act.
And I'm, I'm, I'm happily, happy to pull together up to numbers to see what it looks like. So still in the fire department here for capital, um, transfer and seventy five thousand dollars to the capital reserve fund. And then as far as actual capital outlay, and right now I have in here, this would be the emergency signal. You may not know what this is, this is on Montree Road. Scotty has been involved for, for Chief Freeman, and we've talked to DOT about the potential of putting some type of signal up for them to be able to access Montree Road without any, any type of traffic issues. That's what this will be, that's about thirty thousand dollars from our last estimate from DOT when we talked to them.
I think what it, what it does, does then is that, so it's, it's like a, when the fire truck or ambulance. Or I suppose, could be a police car too, if it needed to be. You know, and it has an emergency need, they, they can press a button or whatever, but, and it will, it, the, the light at the intersection, I think it just stop, it stops traffic in all directions. So that you don't have that, what do we do here kind of thing when, in the, you know, when that, when that happens. So, uh, it's something that probably needed to happen a long time ago. When I'd had a couple of, um, of citizens ask about it, and it's sort of slow incoming, but it's, you know, I think it's, and actually, Chief Harris said that that's one of the first things he was concerned about when he came. And he, you know, he contacted, uh, N C D O T and so forth, but you know, it just takes, you sort of have the channels to go through and so forth, so kind of getting there.
Also here, I've got some, um, departmental supplies, high pressure rescue, airbags, a, a boat replacement. So we currently have a, a boat, it's a blow up boat. It, it's full of holes, I think it's about fifteen or twenty years old, it's, it's not functional. So I've got in here to replace that boat, that, that boat, that cost is fifteen thousand dollars. And then finally.
Is there a little bit of use in any other, but.
Yeah, Swiftwater Rescue, things of that nature. Then I have an assistant chief vehicle in here, so currently we don't have an assistant chief. We're going through that process now with interviews. The previous assistant chief had his own vehicle, so there, there has not been a vehicle for assistant chief, so I have that budgeted in here. Public services admin, there's not really, there's not really much of a change from last year for this year's budget. I don't have any capital, um, which is uncommon for a public service with admin, that's three positions in, in this budget. The street department. I don't have any, so for capital outlay, I have a, a vehicle lift. And what that would be is a lift we would put in our shop. Of course, you're, you know, like you get your oil changed, you go drive the truck in there and lift the truck up so you can get under it. And then an F one fifty, a Ford F one fifty. Parks maintenance. Uh, let's see. Essentially the same, I do have, uh, ten thousand, ten thousand dollars of capital in here. This would be a new fountain for the lake, a new fountain pump. So in the past, we've had those pumps in the lake and it's wear out, to be honest, and that's what happens. So right now they're going out there, but I think it just really just bubbles up, it needs to be kind of more like a fountain. So we've got that budgeted here to put that in for this next upcoming, upcoming budget. And here's your Powell deal that I talked about earlier, so. Essentially capital outlay would be six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and then we've got some professional services costing here in departmental supplies.
You know, Josh, on the paving and so forth, which I agree wholeheartedly, we need to, we need to address uh, uh, condition of our roads. But you already, already exist a plan priority?
Yeah, we, we have a pavement analysis condition report, yes. Street analysis, we sure do.
Yep.
And those are based off, we had, we had an engineer do it, and it's based off of, you know, the degradation of the road.
Right.
Shake its end. Because, you know, the thing about streets, if you don't know, the longer you wait, the more money you cost, of course. Those asphalt costs fluctuate, and then you start getting into the base of some of these roads, it just costs more money to bring them back up, so. Now, the, the fun part, the challenging part is I think this year's kind of easy on pavement because we've got this excess in Powellville that we look forward next year, and you won't, you won't have, have all that excess. So we'll have to figure out, you know, that can come from the street department budget, but it'll be next time around.
Do you have any sort of, uh, idea, you know, how far down the priority list we would get with the nine thousand, okay?
Uh, probably not real far, um, pavement is not cheap. And, and it depends on what the road condition is, Doug, you know, it's hard for me to put an exact number on how much that's going to get us. I think we've got around between fifty and sixty miles of roads in town. And if I'm, I don't know that, you know, I don't even want to say because I, I'll probably be incorrect. We can try to get refined a little better, get you an answer, but I don't have a good answer for that. Sanitation. So this will be a full year, you know, this, 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 when we get into this budget, this is, this is a full year of sanitation. So we have, last year it was just a partial year. The thing I have in here, uh, the landfill charges I've got to increase a little. I still haven't got numbers from the county on if they're going to go up on those charges, but I've got a little bit of increase in there. Twenty five thousand dollars I have in here for capital is for downtown trash cans. What this is, are trash cans that are in our central business district. The ones that have the, uh, the little pebbles on the sides, they're, they're very dated. And the lids just come off, and we've had issues with people putting in their household garbage, just tend to fill them up on a daily basis. These new cans are lockable cans, so people cannot take lid off and put their household garbage in there. You just, and they would be like a, a trash recycling can, but we've got a couple of those down there. But that's what we're looking at for, for those. And then, of course, we got our debt payments scheduled in here.
So way down, way down deep in there somewhere. Do you have some money for, um, the beautification committee?
Yeah, I need to, well, all for the, for the requests they made.
Uh, I had that in mind, but we budget a little bit for them every year, don't we?
Well, yeah, and I didn't go over that, Larry, I shouldn't.
Oh, it's, it's a, it's a small, well, it's a small number, but it's.
That was the governing body budget, and we've got money in there, we call contributions. I did up that, you know, last year we pretty much cut everybody in half because of the pandemic. This year I've got predicted that we go back to full, what we typically have funded in the past, and then I did add five thousand dollars in there for font of flora.
Right, so, and but, you know, we, and we also did, uh, made an allocation to the beautification committee in the prior year budget before we got started. So I'm, I'm curious if, um, that can be afforded this year.
In our current, yes, we'll look.
But let's look at that maybe and see if we can work it in, in, um, in April.
Okay.
You know, it could, it could be, I think the board probably agree, it could be a consent agenda item if we can afford it. If you can't, you can't, if you know.
Sure, so the, I think everybody got that email, but beautification's asking for some, some money to continue their, their, their beautification work. Because they do a great job with down Black Mountain Avenue, try to pull them in more to the central business district, cannot leave that. If you've noticed, it's been out there lately, all that stuff's starting to fill up down there, those old buildings are starting to get tenants in them, so that's great. Recreation revenues, you know, this is still, as I mentioned earlier, you know, I think we're probably going to be manipulating these numbers for a few months, just seeing how things go. And recreation is set to give their annual report to you in April, and I'm really going to have him talk about some options on the pool. On how we move forward with that, um. You know, with, with the COVID restrictions, it, it just becomes a little more, a little more challenging, not that we can't do it, and not that we don't want to do it, but just want to give you all some options on what that looks like for, for the upcoming pool season. Recreation admin, I have a hundred and thirty thousand, the, essentially the operating is, is, hasn't changed a whole lot. But the capital and the new stuff, I've got tennis courts in here, that's sixty thousand dollars. The board, I guess, two years ago, had said that they would, they would try to fund that. We did fund sixty before, I think the year before COVID. And then I've got sixty in here again, and that would be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to resurface the court there at the lake, those courts. Part F. We're trying to get this grant finished up, I think we've got to have it done by this October. We, I know we were short, if you recall, we were short forty thousand dollars from a donation that we had originally budgeted from Palanis, and that fell through unfortunately. So I've got that budgeted in here, forty thousand dollars. We will continue to try to find grants for that, we just have not been able to do so at this point. And I've also got a van in here to be, to be purchased for the recreation department.
And where is the community garden? Those expenses?
Specifically, we don't have just a budget for community garden, so that's all rolled up into recreation.
Right, so it's just the staffing?
Staffing, yeah, staffing is, essentially it's part time. Um, let's see where that is, I think it's, it's in here. So part time temporary, we have forty thousand dollars in here. And that's, and that's really, you know, Diana's position and, um, Teresa's position, I believe, no, that's in Lakeview, excuse me. It's Diana's position and Nancy's part time that we use throughout the year for many summer camps, things of that nature.
Pay the interns?
I don't think we pay interns. We may.
So beyond that, like, um, equipment. So beyond that, like, equipment we don't pay for, they raise that themselves?
You know, and historically, you know, the board may be, somebody got to answer better than me, you know, we just never had a, there's never been a line on budget, to my knowledge, for specific equipment regarding the community garden. It would just come out of departmental supplies or things of that nature.
And then, you know, as far as some of the issues that were raised by the citizens last meeting, you know, they come up with issues and things like that, where would that fall if we did one of them?
If you want to, that's probably going to be public services parks maintenance, uh, right here.
Okay.
And yeah, none of that was, of course, the lake fountain pumps programmed in there and I don't know that she mentioned that in that, in that comment, but of course all that stuff was, this was done before that, of course, before that comment came in. But sure, I mean, absolutely, if the board decides they want to do something different, you know, we can, these numbers are, are changeable. Let's see. This is Gray Eagle and it's just, you know, we don't have, there is some work that needs to be done there, it is not in this current budget, but there's some, some roof work that needs to be done, insulation on the interior. I don't have that budgeted this year. And of course there's no, you know, we don't really, we don't have any. And it's just not really much expense over there as far as, there's no salaries and there's no telephone. Lakeview, you know, we have the one part-time per, or excuse me, the one full-time person there and then we have a part-time person that we pay, that we pay for over there for, for the meals, especially the meal site when that's going on. Anything, there's nothing, I don't have anything budgeted in capital, I don't think there's anything even requested in capital for this, for this department. And then finally our pool, which I think, you know, we'll get kind of more into when, after Josh Anderson gives his presentation to the board in April, having some more discussions on, on what that pool revenue looks like, that this is to pay for our part-time, our part-time folks. You know, there's not, there's just not a lot of change from, from previous year, previous years anyway in pool. That's your general fund. I do not have water fund and golf fund. They're, they're relatively straightforward to the most part and that water fund, I guess is a, nothing is as complex as the general fund. Water fund is, you know, it's essentially, you got, you got some employees, customer service and you have operations, but that's more of a, that's enterprise fund, so you're, you know, you're basing everything off the piece you did.
Yeah, it, I think we'll take a quick look at, I mean, in the future, when you get everything pulled together.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I just, I did have it ready for this one.
Oh, it's okay.
Today.
No, I understand. How much do you think there is in the, impact, you know, from the impact fees?
Right now I think there's about $200,000, $250,000 in there and that, you know, every time someone builds, we get more revenue from that and that's, think about fourth, you know, on a, on a, based on a single family, three bedroom, two bath, I think that's around $3,500, $4,000 every time. And of course that money goes into that system development fee fund and we have to use that money as, as a, as more of a, I guess restricted, as a kind of a restricted line item where that money pays for water system upgrades. So if you're, you know, if you've got a two-inch line, you're upgrading it to a four-inch line, that's perfect. I think actually we may be able to use some of that money for, for, for other things, pump stations, things of that nature too, for increased capacity. But that is essentially your general fund right now and I'm actually kind of excited we got this, we got to have this meeting earlier that made me get this work done much quicker than normal. And now I think it'll, it'll be a little easier moving forward for us to tie it all together, but I'm happy to take questions if anybody has questions right now or comments.
Questions for Josh?
Can you email that to us?
This budget, be happy to.
It probably helpful if, you know, if, if, maybe if you haven't already done it, look at the last budget ordinance.
I could email that out to you though.
Well, it's on the website.
It's on the website, yeah, you can check it out.
But it, it, it's probably, it's a helpful thing. I think the dialogue and the budget ordinance is what might be helpful if you haven't read it before.
The budget message is always good to read.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And we, you know, we put that together for every budget we have to, it's in the front there and three or four pages usually.
Well, any questions? Josh, thank you, I think that was a good start.
You're welcome.
Sounds good. There are no questions and there's no objections, no other business, meeting adjourned.